All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. This is the Tumwater City Council Work Session. So I believe we have everyone. I know Lieta is there. More probably just talking on by phone. So we have Coram. So tonight we have our Budget Workshop number two, and I just want to make a note that Lisa Parks had a family emergency, so she is not going to be here this evening. So Troy is going to do the presentation, and so I will now turn it over to Troy.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. And this is Budget Workshop number two. All right, I hope you can all hear me okay. I'm Troy Nemire, Finance Director, and we've got about 140 slides to go through tonight. Should have you back to your families by nine o'clock or so. And so we'll jump right in, and I'm just kidding. I said 140, it's only about 40, or a little more. It's okay.
Hi, Troy. I'm really excited. There is a delay.
Oh, okay. We just moved the phone.
Is there any delay with anyone else, or is it your location?
It sounds loud and clear to me. Loud and clear.
All right, no delay?
Okay, well, if, council member, if you miss, if there is a delay and you miss something, feel free to stop me. We can slow down or back up a little bit. No problem. Okay, so we'll jump right in here and just give you some kind of bottom line information about this budget where it stands today. There are a lot of really great things in this budget, and there are too many things at the moment. And so when we started this process, and we talked about this at the first Budget Work Session, First Budget Workshop, we had a new process this time involving the whole management team. And the first time we got through everything and came out with a bunch of numbers, we were about $30 million higher than where we should be. And so we went back and we made a bunch of corrections, adjustments, however you want to look at it, put some things off the next biennium, and ran the numbers again, and we were $20 million higher than we wanted. We went back and did it again, and came back again, and now we're about $10 million. And when I say $10 million over, that's revenues compared to expenditures for the biennium. So it's a lot, and it's a big number, and so we're going to go over a whole bunch of stuff tonight. And these things should, most of these should remain in the budget, is my assumption. But we do need to look at several things and bring that number down to a lower level. And so that's our plan, and we'll go get into a bunch of details there. We've got quite a few council requests that are included in this budget, such as police body cameras. And you'll probably notice your printed or electronic copy of your budget that you have looks a little different than the last biennium for the proposed budget. And that's because last time, I think the budget was around 350 pages long. And that's due to the schedules A through I that all the directors fill out to make their budget requests. It's every fund, it's every department within a fund. It's about 311 schedules altogether. So it's very voluminous, and through these iterations of the budget where we've gone back to make adjustments and changes, those schedules are no longer accurate, and so that's why they're not included in there, because it would just be confusing to say, well, wait a minute, this says this is approved, but it's not in there. And so we just didn't want to go through that and confuse everybody. And to update those 311 schedules is going to take a lot of time. So with that, just a quick recap of Budget Workshop number one. A few weeks ago, we did some framing of the budget. We talked about the needs assessments that were done, the new process that we used, and we went over the council goals and priorities, as well as the city's mission, vision, and beliefs. And as always, we started the budget overall back at your council retreat early this year, where you updated your council goals and priorities. And then after the retreat, as the management team started planning for the budget, the city administrator asked us, what do you need to run your departments? Whether it's people, space, professional services, whatever that is, what do you need to run your department and be successful? That's kind of how this all kicked off. And of course, we found, as we mentioned, that the need is very large, and the need is too large for one biennium. So this is, we're going to need to figure out a way to spread this out over time, and we have some more work to do to get there. So our plan, since we've done all this work, we're not going to quote unquote, just cut everything out and forget it. We're going to save the work that we've done. It's been a lot. Directors have put in a ton of time, in some cases, some very involved studies and strategic planning. So we're going to hold on to that and do what we can now, and then make a plan to defer some other things and try to meet those needs in the future. And part of that, as we get into the next biennium, will probably be some very strategic discussions at the council level to talk about things like potential new revenues and service levels and things like that. So how did we get to where we are today with all this need and not enough money to pay for it? It's been a long process. Took many years to get here, and as well as many years with low staffing and deferred maintenance. And it's not uncommon. That's not just Tumwater, that's really all cities. And that's no blame on any one person or position or council or anything else. Really, a lot of these causes of where we're at today is because of initiatives.
Troy, I have a question.
Yes?
So which one would be number one and number two?
For the causes?
Yes. Which one would you rate to be the number one cause and the number two?
I would say the 1% property tax cap for the number one. The car tab initiative did certainly hurt the state and local governments with transportation funding. And as I'll mention, or as can mention just down below, we have the Transportation Benefit District to help make up that gap. The 1% property tax really limits our past and future ability to raise revenue and even keep up with it.
Yeah, and you're going to explain that in detail for the public, right?
Yes, yes, actually. So, yeah, so the, we'll start with the car tab initiative. That was in the late 1990s, where that was an initiative passed by voters to lower the price of car tabs to $30, a flat $30 fee. I remember at that time I had a used vehicle that was three or four years old, and I was paying $750 a month. Sorry, not a month, a year. That would be a really expensive vehicle. I was paying $750 a year for car tabs, and then that dropped down to $30. At the time, I had no idea what kind of impact that would have on government. But you can imagine, a lot of that funding went to transportation programs at both the state and the local level. So that had a huge impact. Cities really had to rethink how they did things. And then next, the 1% property tax cap passed in the early 2000s. And that limited, it used to be in the past, cities could raise the property tax levy from anywhere from zero to 6%, no more than six, and it was encouraged not to raise more than they needed. But if inflation was 5.5%, they could raise that levy 5.5% with just a simple vote of the council. That was taken away with that initiative. The most we can raise property tax now is 1% per year, regardless of what inflation is. And so that really makes it tough for the city to keep up with growing needs. I mean, that's, most of the time, our cost of living increases for salaries is 2% or 3% or more. So a 1% limit on that just really makes it tough to keep up.
So the bottom line is, we had a lot more income in the past to pay for things that we don't now. So it was like a major budget cut, would you say?
Yes, yes, definitely. I think a lot of cities have had to rely on fund balance or savings or reserve funds to cover that difference. And then in that third part down at the bottom where it says "City's Response", those initiatives kind of forced, and the changing laws that go with them, kind of forced cities to go get à la carte funding, so to speak. So we wanted more transportation money, so we formed the Transportation Benefit District. That was one of the tools that were available for the city to go to voters and say, we'd like more money to keep up our roads and streets, and that passed. The first bullet in that bottom section is L3. That stands for Levy-Lid-Lift. So that's another lever that we can pull. It does take a vote of the residents of the town to increase the levy that way, but it worked quite well. We did that in 2011. It was for public safety, so for police and fire, and that really helped the city a bunch. And then, of course, the Tumwater Metropolitan Parks District. We went to the voters with that in 2018, and that was passed, and that helps us fund parks and starting work toward a community center, which was part of that package as well.
Troy, if I can just recommend, instead of L3, make it a little more user-friendly and just write out Levy-Lid-Lift for police and fire. So when it's briefed, people will know, okay, this is what this is for, this is what that is for. Just my recommendation.
Thank you for that. I took a note. I don't know if you can see.
So I have a question.
Yes?
So in terms of the 1% property tax cap, which you alluded to as the causes for not enough revenue, is that really true? Because the county assessors' office have continuously assessed each property more. So essentially, if you were paying, if your assessed value last year was $350, but this year you're not paying close to $475, and although you still cap at 1% property tax, but the assessed value has gone up, in which case you will be paying more property tax. So essentially, while the cap remains at 1%, the assessed value make up for that 1%. So is that really true, Troy, that that 1% is a problem? Thank you.
Yes, that is a problem. It is a problem for cities. And I actually have a slide a little bit later on that'll help hopefully explain some of that. So for the city, we can only raise the levy by 1%. We do also get a little extra from new construction that gets valued at the time that a building is put into service. But other governments, like the state and the school districts, and the county and the port and others have different requirements than cities. And so that's why you see your tax bill going up way more than 1% is because of other players in that. And I'll show you, I have a graph of that later to show you. Okay, so to recap so far, we've got more work to do. We plan to defer more maintenance, probably defer more positions to reduce that gap between revenues and expenditures, so we don't have to use as much of our fund balance reserves. So start talking about the general fund, and as a reminder, the general fund is the primary fund that pays for essential city services like police and fire, pays for our streets and roads, the courts, parks and recreation, community development, and then also all of the support staff behind the scenes in the city attorney, finance, HR, the clerks, et cetera. We'll start talking about things included in the general fund for this budget. Body worn cameras, and I think there's, I know at least I used to have a misperception about body worn cameras. I just thought you go buy the equipment and fit it on an officer's vest, and you're good to go. And that is not the case at all. It's pretty complex stuff. You've got definitely the hardware component, but you've also got software. You've got training for officers and for other staff. These things produce a lot of data and a lot of public records, so you need people to manage that. So this will include four new staff, and it also takes additional space at City Hall. And right now, the police department is out of space in their current location. So our tentative plan for that is probably to move parks and Chuck's group out of their office space downstairs at City Hall and find a different spot for them. Put the police body camera staff down there, so they're in close proximity with the rest of the department. And then it also, we found out recently, includes increased wages for the police guild members. And so we have a cost breakdown for you on this. And so here we have the four positions, and these are kind of staggered starts because it takes some time to get this up and running. So you can't just hire everybody on January 1st and issue body cameras. There's, with the training and everything else involved, it takes a little time to get it up and running. But we do have an IT person starting January 1st for this. Halfway through the first year, a couple more folks starting, and then by year two, everybody is, all four new positions are going full time. So we've got a cost breakdown on the bottom half of that, what it costs for new people, about $706,000 for the biennium. Guild wages increase about $205,000, and then the hardware about $213,000 for a grand total of a little more than $1.1 million for the first biennium. Yes, council member?
Yes, I know that there are grants that other local police departments have used for the body worn cameras. Have we looked into any of those?
I'm not sure about that. I can check with the chief and get back to you on that one. He's usually pretty good at looking for grants if they're available, so I would be surprised if he hasn't. But I can check with him, and we'll get back to you on that. Okay, some additional council requests. Whoa.
What was that?
Excellent presentation.
You're all free to go. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. We'll get this queued up again. Oh, oh. Could be a problem with the remote, or it could be a user error. We'll find out in a minute.
Thank heavens, we have IT staff here. While we're waiting for that, one of the things that I might mention, and I'm sure Troy's going to mention too, is yes, we have that deficit, but we also have ending fund balance, which we don't want to use all of it to make this all work. So that is one of the issues that we want to deal with is not, you know, it's like using your savings account for everything that you need to do and pay, you know, to make all those expenses. So, Councilor Dahlhoff, do you have a question?
I'm going to try. Thanks, Mayor. Troy, when we get the additional details of the budget items, are you going to note which funds are coming from Prop 1 funds from the county?
I can give you a high-level idea of that now. So basically, the Prop 1 funds were expected in the first full year to have $940,000. And so that should be enough to cover the body worn cameras and enough to cover the city's portion of the Medic 1, the new Medic 1 unit. And that'll pretty much use them up. But, you know, they can increase over time too as sales tax, as we have more businesses in Tumwater and sales tax collections rise.
Thank you, Troy.
You bet. Okay. So other items that are included, and I'm going to touch this remote as little as I can for the rest of tonight. We have senior home repairs at $25,000 each year for a total of $50,000. The community human services program continuing at $15,000 each year for a total of $30,000. And then these next two are not big budget items, so I didn't put dollar amounts in there, but forming an equity commission, which we've been talking about. And also, there's money in the budget to do a study about stipends for commissions and boards at the city. And those may even start before the end of the year, but that would be a better question for Lisa, so I shouldn't have said anything. Also on the radar from council requests, these are items that are probably less budget impactful, and we just need to know more about them or do some research or some study to figure out what these look like and what it's going to cost. And those include sensory recovery spaces at parks, brew tower signs to raise funds, morning side staff to work at City Hall, and then the paint recycling drop-off location. Okay, as we discussed briefly, the new Medic 1 unit that is included in the budget, you approved those contract amendments with Medic 1 at your last meeting, and that involves nine new paramedics, four of which start in 2024, and five of those will start in 2025. In addition to that, whoops, and here's the, as a reminder, here's the cost breakdown of that. And so the total expense for the nine positions is estimated for the biennium at $2.5 million. Revenue, we get reimbursed 80% of salaries from Medic 1, so that's a really great program. We'll recover about $2 million from that for a net cost of the city of about $512,000 for the entire biennium. And then in addition to the medic unit, I did want to mention too, the Medic 1 program pays for the vehicle, so that's really great, as well as the supplies that go in the vehicle. But we will need to remodel Station T2 to fit the extra personnel down there. Right, at the moment, there's just not enough space. And so the fire chief is working to get an architect and an estimate for that. We felt like we needed to put something, some number in the budget, so we took our best guess, and we put $1.3 million in there for that. Hopefully, it's less money. Could be more. We just won't know until we get some actual estimates done for that. Another item included in the budget is the nonrepresented salary study. So we talked about this at the council retreat earlier this year and brought it up again at the last budget amendment that we did for the current budget. So this graph you've seen before, and this is an illustration of the differences between the bargaining units. And so the line on the top, the gray one, is the fire department. The orange one below that is police, the yellow is Teamsters, and then the dark blue one at the bottom are the nonrepresented staff. And so this just illustrates over time without the ability to bargain for wages that the non-reps have fallen behind. And this isn't to say that we're going to jump them up to where police and fire are. It's not how it works. But we've done, or HR has done, a pretty extensive study of what our comparable cities are and how do similar positions compare to those comparable cities? A city with a similar population, similar assessed value, and similar services offered. And so the goal with that is to make us competitive in the job market, keep our good staff that we have, be able to retain those, and when we do have to recruit for staff, be more competitive in recruiting. This is another one. Oh, council member? Council member Kathy?
Yes, I had a question about, you said that is the money that's in the budget to study yet some more about whether we should adjust these salaries for nonrepresented employees?
No, so we're doing this study in-house. We're doing this ourselves, and so we don't need extra money to do the study. The study is complete, and the money in the budget is to raise the wages of our nonrepresented staff.
So it's already decided that they're going to get more than this graph shows next year?
Yes. Well, that's our hope. I mean, ultimately, that's up to the council to approve as part of the budget process. But yes, our hope is definitely that we will be able to raise those wages up higher than they are now.
That's good, because that's where we've lost a lot of, I think, probably a lot of fine people, maybe that already worked here or wanted to work here. That's been, that's been an area of concern for a number of budget cycles. So I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I agree. I've only been here for three and a half years, but I've certainly observed when trying to hire people for the finance department and with my colleagues in other departments too, seeing how hard of a time it is to recruit engineers and how hard of, you know, Mike Matlock's had a really hard time getting planners and things. And so it has been challenging, so I think if we can be more competitive, that'd be a great thing for the city.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I hope that we work hard on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of hard work has gone into it and will continue. This has a pretty hefty price tag. The total for all funds, if you look in the lower-left corner, highlighted yellow, at the moment is estimated to be about $2.5 million, and that's not just for the biennium, that's each year. And so we've got that split out by golf, utilities and ER and R combined, so about $92,000 for the golf course, $515,000 for the utilities, and general fund impact is just over $1.9 million in total. And that's inclusive of, so we're basically doing a market adjustment on the wages. And so that's the base increase column that you see there. We include, we also are including a COLA of 3.8% because if we increase the market rate but don't give a COLA, then we're already falling behind again. And then that estimate also includes the payroll taxes that the city pays for like the long-term paid family medical leave and social security and things like that.
That's good. Very good, because if we keep losing in the long run, it probably costs us as much or more to go recruit and all of the costs that goes into rehiring and training. So I agree with you 100%. Good.
Councilor Ralph Hauser.
Does the base increase represent an across-the-board adjustment? Or is it custom to different classifications that reflect kind of where they were compared to market for positions in similar municipalities?
The latter, and I'll repeat that just in case. Oh, we have a, there's a puck over there. Did everybody hear Michael's question? No? Okay, so basically, the question was, is this an across-the-board increase or is this kind of more position by position relative to, like, say you take an accountant position, and we look at that compared to our comparable cities? And that's the correct answer. It's position by position. So there are some positions that really aren't that far behind the market that we don't need to make a big adjustment to. And there are some others that are, we're finding are way behind the market and need bigger adjustments. And so it's not a flat increase. I would, I estimate overall it's around 15% on average, but some people would be above that, some people would be below that. I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to move to the next slide. So in addition to the market adjustment for the nonrepresented staff, as part of asking what we need to run our departments, part of this is staffing also, meaning new staffing. And as you're probably all aware, the police department did a big strategic growth plan. I think they spent about a year working on it. I think they spent about a year working on it, fire did something very similar. And so there's been, in some cases, a lot of work done on this, and even retaining some outside expertise to help with those plans. And so as part of that, the need identified for police was nine new officers, and this is over and above the body worn cameras. So this is, in addition to that, for fire, the need was eight new firefighters or firefighter paramedics, and that is over and above the new medic one unit. So currently, in the budget that you have in front of you today, as we've gone through these iterations of trying to bring the cost down, there are five new police officers approved, four have been deferred to the next biennium. For fire, there have been, there are four new approved or deferred. In engineering, we have four new engineers in there approved. For community development, two new positions, one deferred, parks and facilities. So parks and recreation and facilities, which all fall under the Parks and Recreation Director, 11 new staff. We have one new senior accountant approved in finance for HR, two new positions, two deferred positions. And then for IT, as it relates to the general fund, one, and that one is for the body worn cameras. So that's really not an addition, but just wanted to point that out. Now we move over to the utilities and to ER and R. In the water utility, we have nine new positions requested and approved at this time. They have a little bit of an advantage over the general fund, because rate increases can be used to pay for new positions, and they are needed. In sewer, we have two new positions, and in storm three, for the ER and R fleet portion, we have one new position for a supervisor, and then ER and R for IT, we have a couple. One is a regular IT person for IT, because they can use some help. The other one is, it will be housed under IT, but it's really to help with the ERP. And I want to spend just a second on that, because you may recall, when we started this ERP, we had planned on having two full-time positions to manage that project. We had Matt Ames and Julie McGarva. And soon after the project kicked off, there was turnover in HR, and Julie got pulled halftime back into HR, so we had 1.5 FTEs on the ERP project. And soon after that, there was more turnover, and she got pulled in 100%. And so we were down, we've been down to one FTE for the ERP for, pretty much for the life of the project. And so Matt's been doing a great job of keeping it going, but he can really use some help. And it's especially as we get ready to start working on community development for the new permit system, we're really going to need some extra resources there. Okay, and also in this budget, in addition to the new things being asked for, we have some prior commitments that we still need to honor. You'll recall from a couple of years ago when we got ARPA funding, we made some commitments to the Friends Anderson Tiny Home Village of $275,000. That money has not been spent yet, it is now general fund dollars, but it's sitting there waiting. Also, for the housing authority, for the project just down the road, for low-income senior housing, we had $275,000 allocated for that. They have 100, they are spending that money currently, and they have $148,000 left. And so that's in the budget for next year, unless they happen to spend it all before the end of this year. And then for the Thurston EDC, they have a daycare assistance program, and $550,000 was allocated for that, that they have not requested reimbursement for yet. So those will be in the budget to honor those commitments that we made to those programs.
For the EDC, is that time limited? Like, does that money go away if they don't bill it down?
Not necessarily, because the money is now general fund money. We don't have the time restriction like we did if it was still ARPA dollars. If they were, if we had not made that switch, then yes, there would be, there would come a point at the end of this, the 25, 26 biennium, where that money would be gone, we'd have to give it back.
They're planning on doing something with it still?
It's my understanding, I haven't really been involved with that program. Austin was kind of taking care of that for us before he left, but we did receive an email from them a couple of months ago. So we know they still, or we believe they're doing something, and they will want to be reimbursed.
It's frustrating when the, you know, the Friends Tiny Home Village will have a revision to the ILA for that, that's still in the works. But it's frustrating if there's a lot of money just sitting in an account that would be helping a lot of people that otherwise isn't.
Yeah, and when we made that switch with the ARPA money, it's not a switch. We, I came up with a new plan to basically spend it faster and have it converted to general fund dollars, and that was part of the reason is, knowing that there was a time limit on it, I didn't want that to expire. And then there were talks about clawback provisions and other things, and so we got that handled. Council member Kathy, did you have a question?
Yes, it's just something I don't remember, does the Thurston County EDC already have a daycare?
No, they don't, I believe what that was is there, and I won't say this great, because I wasn't really involved with it, but I think daycares or perhaps residents can come to them with, you know, if they're, I would assume they have to be low income, and to basically have them provide, cover the cost of the daycare.
You mean, they're like giving grants out for people to afford to pay for daycare?
Essentially, yes.
I haven't heard anything about that, I mean, not that I need daycare, well, maybe I do. But I just wondered what that was, I had no, I have no memory of that, but that's okay. But that seems like a chunk of money.
Definitely a chunk of money, and I think if memory serves me, when we first started allocating those ARPA dollars, we had intended on that same amount, that $550,000, to go to the EDC for economic development. But they didn't, they didn't have a firm plan yet. And so I think it was maybe after that initial allocation that they came back and said, hey, how about we do basically these daycare type of grants? And because that'll, and the nexus with economic development there is, now if the, if someone who can't work because they can't find daycare or can't afford daycare, now all of a sudden, they can afford to put their kids in daycare or have that cost covered for them, then they join the workforce, and that becomes an economic development driver.
Like Michael's previous question, have they drawn on that money, are they actually doing that?
I think, I can follow up on that, I think they're starting to do the program, but they haven't drawn down any of, at least none of our funding yet.
Okay.
I can follow up.
Yeah. I mean, as we talk to people, or people come to us for some kind of assistance, it'd be good to know if that's an active ongoing thing, because that's a big deal for some people, being able to get work, so.
Definitely, and I can reach out to the EDC and ask them some follow-up questions, and then report back to you.
Yeah, because they may have deferred it or something, so. Thank you, Troy.
Sure, council member Agabi?
So if my memory serves me right, the $550,000 is part of $20 to $25 million that is going to go towards the building, a building that will house this daycare center. And that building, I believe, is somewhere up in Lacey. So our contribution is not just the whole package, it's just a part that goes towards construction of this building.
Oh, okay, I had not heard that, but that doesn't mean it's not true. So I will include, I'll include that in the follow-up with the EDC and see what they're doing with that money.
They got a local community project grant from the LD22 for a daycare in Lacey. So I think that was one of the requests that came through this session, so I think that's fair.
Okay. Sounds like you're probably right.
So we're just participating in something that's larger, like Eileen, you said it was something that was through the legislature, that it's going to be located in Lacey through the EDC, is that right?
I just remember there was a request, I'd have to look it up, but there was a request, and I believe it was funded for them to get, for Lacey to receive some money for a childcare center. So I can't remember if it's school-based, it's one of the schools, sorry, I need to look it up, no, but I think I'm aware of that one.
It's strange, it's strange none of us have heard about it, you know, it's such an important, important thing, you know. Progress on something like that would be good to hear.
Well, you haven't heard about this, because this was at the beginning of, middle of last year, so it's not just something that started this year.
No.
Okay, well, thank you all for your questions and comments on that. Like I said, I will follow up, it sounds like a couple of folks have heard about it, and so that's probably the case. But I'll still follow up with them and get some more details to bring back to you.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so now we're going to jump over to the revenue side of the budget. And as a reminder, the basic funding for the general fund is taxes, sometimes permits and fees, but by and large, taxes. And let's take a look at that visually here.
Troy, can you go back for a minute?
Yes, for more transparency and to make it crystal clear, I would like to see a what and a why slide, so our priority, our budget priorities. Increase in hiring needed personnel, pay raises, because body worn cameras. Why? To, just to make it crystal clear that these are what our priorities are. And I was also thinking about a slide for the car tabs at $30. What was the income generated before when it was that amount? And then what is the income generated now since it's capped at $30? So we can clearly see, you know, where the money was before and after, am I making sense?
You are, on that one in particular, that might be pretty difficult, because it was so long ago to go back and find that historic information related specifically to that. That would be much easier to do with the 1% property tax cap. Because, so basically, for cities, when the car tabs went down to $30, I think the cities didn't get anything after that, or it was such a small amount, that it's probably not even worth tracking. However, with the property tax, you can definitely track that over time. And we still get property tax, we just can't raise it commensurate with inflation. And so we can definitely show the effects of that.
Yeah, I would like, or if we can use your example, for example, you paid, you said you paid $750 for your car tabs. So now it's down to $30, so what might that look like for, you know, 1,000 people? So we can probably do something like that, but I just wanted everyone to see what we had before and what we had now. Because people are always saying, you know, we're being taxed enough, where's this money going? Like, we're awash with money, so I think it would be good if you could just show a clear picture.
Okay, thank you.
A little more work for you, but I think that would be helpful.
I do like to be helpful. All right. Okay, so to me, this is the updated graph for the 2025-2026 budget for general fund revenue. And you can't see it, because I don't have last year's pie graph on here, but it stood out to me right away that property tax is now our second highest form of revenue behind sales tax. Last biennium, that was reversed, and I believe for many bienniums before that, property tax was our largest single source of revenue for the general fund. That has dropped down to 22% now, and sales tax has overtaken property tax and is now at 27%. So again, we're seeing the long-term effect of the limit on property taxes for the city. And I agree with those of you who commented about, because I certainly notice that when I get my tax bill from the county also, my tax bill goes up a lot more than 1%. And we're going to have that graphic here in just a moment, I think. But basically, property tax and sales tax make up roughly half of our general fund revenue. B and O tax gives us a nice chunk, and then intergovernmental contracts and grants, so that could be grants. It's also medic one that make up another big chunk. Yes.
Charges for services, is that things like fire inspection or?
Yes.
Stuff like that, okay, that's not, utilities is a separate fund, not apart from the general fund, so that doesn't include water?
Correct. Okay, and so here is the graph that I got from the county assessor's office. This is the most current one that they have. And so this shows where, by percentage, where property tax dollars go. And you'll see the local school districts get the biggest chunk, get 36.6%. State schools get an additional 23%. So a significant portion of property tax is taken up just by the schools. Next is the fire districts, that, and that's 10.63%. That does not include our fire department, because we are not a fire district. We are a municipality with a firefighting force. And so we do not get a piece of that pie. So that's like your South Bay Fire District, Black Lake McLean, and other independent fire districts. And then you have the county at 8.92%, and then we are, we come in fifth place at 7.91%. And that, and that, that piece right there includes the 1% that we can raise each year, as well as any new construction we get related to that.
And just a clarification, that's all cities and towns in the county?
Yes, thank you.
We share that, not get that?
Yes, yes, the city of Tumwater does not get 7.91%, that is, that's the share of all cities and towns in the county. Council member Agabi?
So looking at your graph, right, when you say the 1% property tax is the cause, that is not true. What the cause is, is a distributive factor of that one, of the total taxes that are collected. That is where the problem lies, because if the local school district is collecting at that 36.64, and all cities within the county at 8.92, so that is not the problem, because essentially, like you just confirmed a little while ago, the property tax keeps going up, even though it's capped at 1%, it does not come down. So essentially, it is how we distribute that money that is the problem, right?
I think you could make a case for that. So, and you're correct, that the property tax that the city levies does not go down. So we levy the same dollar amount of taxes as we did in the prior year, plus 1% for an increase. And yes, the, those other levies, levies by individual school districts. Um, and, and yes, the, those other levies, uh, levies by, by individual school districts, as well as the other taxing districts, you know, fire departments, the, or the fire districts, um, in our area, um, do their own levies. Um, and, and it can be, they, they can levy up to their maximum and they don't have that same one percent. Uh, I don't believe they have that same one percent limit. Okay. This one is general fund expenditures by category. And so you can see, um, the, the biggest chunk of general fund expenses is salaries and benefits, uh, sixty-six plus percent, I believe. Um, so that is, that is far and away our biggest driver of expenses, uh, for the general fund. Um, followed by other charges and services and then just some, some smaller items there. Uh, general fund expenditures by department. Um, the, the police department and fire department are almost half of the general fund expenses, uh, followed by parks at twelve point nine percent. Uh, transportation, transportation and engineering at ten point four. Um, and then the other, uh, support departments behind that. Included, this is actually from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So last time we were doing budget workshops like this, um, this was one of the slides from there. And I just, I just put this in there to illustrate, um, that, um, in the last budget, we were predicting a recession would happen. And so the revenue projection reflected that. And so, uh, we were in a similar situation last time as we are this time where, uh, revenue falls short of budgeted expenditures. Uh, last time there wasn't a whole lot we could do about it unless we wanted to reduce positions and things like that. Uh, we had decided we were going to use, um, some fund balance, uh, to cover that difference. Um, and one of the big differences in the last budget were a lot of those expenditures were one-time or extraordinary expenditures. Um, and in this budget, we don't have a lot of one-time expenditures. Most of these are ongoing, uh, programs and people. So for this, this is basically the same slide for this budget. Um, the, we're about ten point two million dollars more in expenditures than revenue. Uh, we think that's, that's too high. So that's why we're going to go back and make some adjustments and bring that down. Uh, we feel like it, it's okay to spend some fund balance in, in this budget, but, but not, that just seems like too much at one time for us, which is why we're going to go make some revisions and come back to you again.
Thanks. Just to clarify. So the budget, as it's been presented to us in the book, if that was enacted today, we would be spending ten million, ten point two million dollars off ending fund balance and our ending fund balance would be thirteen point three.
Yes.
But because we'll go back to the drawing board on some of this stuff, like we're not at number lock. So we're, the ending fund balance, the goal is to be higher than what we're currently at.
Yes. And.
Is there a number lock goal for ending fund balance of what you've assessed would be a comfortable level by what you're working backwards from?
Not necessarily. I'm, um, as the finance director, I'm, um, a little fiscally conservative and would, and, uh, get a little nervous if our, if our ending fund balance gets too low. I do want to point out though on this, um, so where, like where it says beginning, we actually, there's actually, those reserves would also count. Not the required ending balance, um, two-month reserve, but that, the other line where it says all reserves, the seven million, seven point one million dollars, that also becomes part of our reserves or, or it is part of our reserves at the end of the year.
That's different than ending fund balance?
Uh, it's, it's technically part of ending fund balance when, when we do our financial reports.
And is there a level of ending fund balance where low and that would therefore impact our credit rating and our ability to secure bonding?
Yes. Uh, if, if the fund balance gets too low, so when, when we go out for bonds to finance an M and O center or, or the big water storage tank project, um, they'll, they will look hard at our reserves and, and that ending fund balance. Uh, because they want assurance that we're going to be able to repay the debt.
Right.
And that's part of the process they go through. So that's another reason for not wanting to get it too low. Um, I think even where it sits right now, uh, that would be an acceptable level, um, for, for the bonding companies. Um, however, uh, like I mentioned, a lot of these, a lot of these things we've talked about tonight are not one-time expenditures. They're ongoing. And so that, that fund balance will continue to decline, uh, really fast if it's, if, at the, at this current level. Thank you. Good question. Okay. You asked for it, council member Jefferson. Um, you asked for the cliff. And so here it is. This is last year, last budget cliff. So this is the exact same graph you saw, um, in these presentations last time around. And so for anybody listening who's not familiar with this, the, um, the blue line on the top is revenue. The red line right next to it is expenditures. And so you can see how that fluctuates up and down sometimes. Um, but they kind of track close. And in twenty twenty-four, um, by the end of this year, they're, they're kind of intersecting. And that's the point at which we think expenditures will exceed revenues, um, and, um, the fund balance will start to decline. Uh, down lower on the graph, the purple line is our minimum required fund balance, which is two months worth of operating expenditures. Uh, or about seventeen percent. Uh, and this is general fund. And then that green line is the ending fund balance. And so, um, so in, in the last budget cycle, when we went through this, the, uh, the cliff, if you want to call it that, or the, where I would put, some people would probably say the cliff is when you go below zero. Uh, for, for me and in my position, that's where your ending fund balance drops below your minimum required reserve. So I guess you could look at it either way, but that, that intersection at the bottom of the graph was in twenty twenty-six. Here is an, an updated fiscal cliff for the current budget as it stands today. Um, that intersection now happens in twenty twenty-eight. And I think if we, if we can go back and make some, uh, additional reductions in the expenditures, we can kick that out a little bit further. And I put in some nice like neon kind of eighties colors here because, uh, I heard the eighties was coming back and, uh, I think most of us were there for it. So, um.
Claire, I was in the instance.
I didn't say all of us.
Not all of us, but.
All right. So some things that, that need to happen, um, in the next biennium. Um, so, you know, we talked earlier about, um, new positions identified in police and fire. Um, and in the budget, the way it sits today, today, they don't have all those positions funded. And so we're going to need to go back and look at that again. Um, again, they've done the work. They've done the planning. We've got to figure out how can we pay for it and get them the positions that they need. Uh, we need to renew the transportation benefit district. That actually expires next year. And so, um, I think we're planning on having that on the ballot next April. Um, and we'll need to, uh, hope, it'd be really helpful if we can pass that again. Um.
Coming April?
Yes. Coming up soon. And that's, that, that could be a, a tough one. Um, as we know, Mary Heather Ames, uh, left for another position recently. She was heading the charge on that. And so now I think that's fallen to Brandon. And so he's, he's trying to do two jobs and, um, I believe that's on his plate at the moment. Hopefully, I think he's got a candidate that they hope to hire soon and have someone else take that off his plate. Um, continued economic development. Um, again, the, with the, with the one percent property tax limit, um, things like new construction, new businesses coming to town, uh, really help us, uh, push that fiscal cliff out further. Uh, we will continue, oh, we will, uh, continue to work with our partners in the legislature and A W C to work on that property tax limit. Who knows if we'll pass it this year, but, uh, it's, it's definitely on, on the agenda for every city in the state. Um, we'll continue to monitor our revenue, uh, assumptions and projections. We do that, uh, continuously to make sure we're staying on track. Uh, continue to make smart infrastructure investments, things like when we extended Taiyi Drive. Um, you know, it took about five years, but, uh, but then it pays off and, and really helps us in the future. Um, and then as part of these overall discussions, um, kind of alluded to it in the first bullet on this one, but exploring revenue options. And we're going to talk about one of those real quick here. Um, so we've got, um, the financial toolbox that you've seen before. And here I just marked it up a little bit to, to help explain kind of what this does. So we have, we have a limited number of tools in our toolbox or a limited number of levers we can pull, um, as it relates to, to revenues and expenditures. Uh, and so these are, these are the main ones here. Uh, levels, levels of service. Um, if we want to reduce expenditures, um, we can, we can scale back programs or eliminate programs. We can let the grass grow longer in the parks and things like that. Those are examples of levels of service. Um, or calls that police or fire may or might, may not be able to, um, uh, respond to. Uh, we can, we can look at increasing revenue, um, such as a levy lid lift. Um, you may recall when the RFA did not pass in twenty twenty-three, um, some of the, the people that were fighting against the RFA, um, their suggestion was why doesn't the city just go get a levy lid lift? And so that's something we've done before and something we, we may want to consider again. Uh, efficiencies are always great and I would say that we've, we've been trying to gain efficiencies for the last twenty-five years and, um, they're gone. Uh, tax increases and fees, uh, is something that, that we can increase. An example of that would be the utility tax, uh, on our utilities. And then one-time revenues, again, we, we were fortunate the last three or four years to have, um, stimulus funds, uh, during the pandemic, uh, which are, are pretty much gone now or committed. So this, this budget, and this, this will not be the only conversation about this, but this budget, uh, does, uh, propose an increase to the utility tax for the Tumwater owned utilities. Uh, council member Kathy?
Thank you, Troy. I, I, I wanted to make a, if you could go back to the other slide. I, I just wanted to ask kind of a broad question. Do we get complaints about the service of our police and our fire? Do, do, do we, do we hear back, uh, that they're not meeting the needs of the community or not efficient in their work or anything?
I do not hear those complaints. Um, but in my role, I, I may not. I'm, um, I would, I would probably have to check with, with the chief on that. Um, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure they get complaints. Whether the complaints are warranted, warranted or not, I don't know. I, I'm not aware of any complaints as, as far as level of service goes or the calls they respond to, but, uh, I wouldn't really be on the know either.
The reason I'm asking that is because, you know, a huge chunk of our budget goes to police and fire. And I always hear mostly positive things about it, uh, in response to calls, in, you know, the efficiency and, and the skills and the kindness of, especially firefighters, but also, um, maybe some more complaints about how somebody was treated by the police or so forth. But it feels like we always assume we need more. And, and then the answer is, is kind of consistently, well, other cities of our size, other cities are, couldn't take our people away or, or that kind of thing. There could be a city of our size that has a lot of crime or has much more, you know, mixture of, of people and lifestyles and so forth. I mean, we're, we're pretty homogeneous here. And so I'm just wondering if we're making an assumption that every year or so, we hire more people in public safety, in fire and police. And, and that's, those are huge budget items. So that's, 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 that's a combination of a, of a concern and a wondering that, that I've been doing in the last few years. Because, um, every year of, this is now the seventeenth time I've been through the, the city budget. That's always, always something we need. And it's one of the top cost employee things. So I wanted to just throw that out tonight to say, uh, you know, how do we, how do we come to this? What are, what are the things? And like you say, Troy, maybe I should, um, sit down and have that conversation with, um, the chief and the assistant chief for, of, of both fire and police. But it, but, but I don't know. I just want to make sure that our responsibility as council members are looking at what our city really needs and what people are, are asking for. And they will quickly, one of the other things is it does, it, it bothers me and it hurts my heart that we keep raising and feeling like we can just keep, keep, keep raising taxes on fees. You know, that hurts, that hurts the people at, at a lowest income level consistently. I mean, my, my, um, my water bill, I mean, it all comes, you know, it is like, it's, it's climbing to almost twice as much as, you know, when I moved to Tumwater. Uh, and, and we say, well, ours is one of the lowest in the, in the, the three cities or this and that. But I, I think that we need to think about that in terms of our other things about equity and, and, uh, how we, how we tax and do our business like we're doing here with the budget on the backs of, uh, you know, people that are already struggling to stay in their homes. Or they get in one and realize that just the monthly rent is not always the utilities and all of the other, um, costs. So anyway, I'm, I just decided tonight to throw all of that thinking out, out for human concern or shut up and sit down, Joan. That's enough. So.
Joan, I might, I might make mention that one of the conversations I've been having, as I understand the whole thing, on raising utility rates and how that impacts the lower income individuals, especially seniors in our community. But in addition to that, we need to look at having a program where we can assist those who need the assistance. So, you know, this is something that we need to look at of, of having so that, you know, doing that in a broad, uh, fashion, it doesn't, you know, the people that are most impacted that is a negative impact. We, we can look at doing a program where we can help them, um, with their utilities. And so, and so that's something that we're discussing. And so, uh, it's not, you know, we're, we're, it's just being discussed at this time, but I, I don't see where that wouldn't be able to happen.
No. Thanks for that, Mary. Um, the, the other part of it, when we talk about it, it's not just seniors. It's, it's working people with, with children, trying to balance their utilities with their food. And, um, you know, so, so it's, it's seniors and, and working people. And if we're going to work harder in ways to help them, uh, that's wonderful. That's, that's, thank you for that.
And having that life experience, being a single mom for a very long time, you know, I, I totally understand that. It's, uh, you know, uh, three days before payday, you're doing tuna fish on toast for your children because that's what you can afford to do. I, I totally understand. And, and yet you're still earning too much to get a lot of programs, but there's some way of making assistance for people to help. So I, having lived that experience, I'm very sensitive to that experience.
I know that about you. You've already, you've said that before. And, um, and so I knew if I said that, that would rile you up. And, um, and, and also I'm glad to hear that your kids still like tuna on toast.
Yes, they do.
And may I add, this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, this is why.
This is why our slides need to be crystal clear, um, on exactly, you know, where we stand. Because there's a lot of people out there that, you know, are, are really hurting right now. And so just to be fully transparent and just, just show it, you know, my suggestion is a before and after, this is the total amount we are looking at. It hurts, but when you know and when you can see it, then maybe it won't hurt as bad.
To a degree, will investments in staff for like fire and police also reduce expenditures we're having to do now for overtime? Possibly. I don't think. Project that and account that into potential savings. I, I think there are some instances where it could. I don't know if that's, if that's part of the plan, uh, with these proposals is to, to decrease the overtime or not. I do know, and, and I can respond, um, to councilmember Kathy's comment, uh, related to police and fire. I, excuse me. I don't have all the, all the great information for you and the details, but I, I do know that, um, police, the police department embarked on about a one-year journey with Dr. Bowers. And so it wasn't, i- in this case, uh, it certainly wasn't just, we want more police, so we're going to ask for them. They actually did a, a very, uh, kind of unique and one-of-a-kind study. Dr. Bowers is, uh, this is the kind of stuff, uh, that, that he does. And he's, he's very good at it. And so rather than taking a traditional policing model that says you should have this many, X amount of police per every 1,000 residents, uh, he came up with an entirely new, um, program to evaluate data. And look at call volumes and, and then figure out what we need, uh, to address that. And so, um, we could probably, I'm sure the police department would be happy to come to a work session sometime and, and explain more about that. But that's, that's kind of the high level of what I know about it and fire too. Fire, um, did a, they hired a consultant, um, that does work with fire departments around the country. Um, and they also dug into a lot of data, um, to, to make recommendations for staffing. And so I, I do know that a lot of, uh, really good work went into coming up with those recommendations. And, uh, we could, I'm sure they'd be happy to come, um, present to you sometime about them.
I'm sure a lot of work did go into it. It's just that, you know, I just, people ask those types of questions and wonder. And so I just thought that during budgeting was a good time to throw it out and see, see what the conversation was and I'm sure, I know, don't think anybody's randomly asking for raises. If they are, they should make them high. But thanks for that Troy. I, 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 I don't think it's willy-nilly at all.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Oh, and we were talking about overtime. That, that was one of the things that we used to see when we got the schedules, um, where the overtime costs were. A fire typically runs like a million dollars of overtime costs. And so we're not seeing that on these deals on the budgets. So I'm just curious. We could see, like, that kind of a page. Um, but it would maybe help with, um, Michael's question as far as. It would be interesting to see if, if we, with the hiring of new staff that it would help reduce those costs. But it's typically run, you know, to a million dollars.
Yeah, I, I think overtime is just an interesting metric beyond, to also measure demand because that's literally the demand that we needed to meet a minimum service level. That doesn't mean that meets the service level that we want to hold ourselves accountable to. But it means like the very minimum that we did the year prior. This is how much staff it would have taken to do. Yeah, and some of those, um, as, as you know, police and fire both have minimum staffing levels also. And, uh, you know, so if some, if somebody gets hurt, um, on the job or off the job, you know, if they're not able to come to work, whether they call in sick or if someone gets an injury and has to go out on L and I or, or, um, a, a thing we're seeing more and more is, um, paternity leave and maternity leave. You know, when, when people have a growing family, they take more, they're taking more time off nowadays than they used to. And so, yeah, it's absolutely great for families. But tho- those kinds of situations do end up causing overtime because then now you have to bring someone in to cover their shift. And, and I think at least, at least at times, having, having more people available to staff those shifts can, can help prevent overtime in those kind of cases.
I might comment that we had quite a bit of overtime before we had very many women employees in those areas. So I don't know if the men were taking family leave or something else, but, you know. We've done a, we've done a good job of hiring, uh, women in our police department in the last, what? Maybe decade, the last 10 years. Been, it's been good. So I'm happy to give them family leave. I think, I think that if that's one of the expenses that's, I can understand it, but I agree with the Eileen mentioning how much money we've paid out in overtime over the years, per year.
Yeah. Okay.
Good discussion.
Good, yeah, great, great questions, everybody. So this, this budget does, uh, propose increasing the city's utility taxes. This would just be on water sewer storm, not on, um, the other utilities like cable and internet and garbage and, and power. And, and I do want to add into, because some of the questions already kind of got at this. We do have the lifeline program currently, which gives 50% off, um, for utilities for low-income customers. And then we also have the, the hardship program, which is our own internal program, uh, funded by community donations. And, um, and that can, that goes, people can apply for that, um, even if they're not necessarily low income. I mean, there's, there's an income threshold, but there's also exceptions like, uh, a divorce or a death or other, other kind of things, life events that might trigger eligibility for that. And then as the mayor mentioned, um, we're going to look at possibly some new programs also or seeing if we can expand some programs. Because we're not, not insensitive to how this affects people.
Thanks Mayor. With those programs, has there been a review of like the application process? And, you know, regarding to the upcoming equity work of any pain points or challenges or hurdles that we are unintentionally creating? An example is, do you have to be a homeowner? And I'm thinking of residents who rent a manufactured home park. Have we reviewed the elements that we require? I know in the past we had challenges with Community Action Council of people not applying for the funds that they were distributing for us because the application was too involved versus other avenue sources like PSC funding. Have, have we done that work or will that be included in the work that the mayor was talking about? Those programs of the pain points that we are unintentionally creating and who's included, uh, in applying?
I think, I think kind of two answers to that. I think there's, there's still a little more work to do and yes, we've done some of the work. We recently took, so for our, our hard, our Tomwater hardship program, the one that's our own program. We recently took that back from Community Action Council. For, for various reasons, um, they had a, they had really high turnover on their board and were having so, some problems. And, and to your point, uh, yes, people, we, we heard feedback that the application process was too onerous and difficult. We have a simple one-page form now that people can fill out. Rather than going through the Community Action Council, um, they, they can call or come in in person. They can, they can get that application to us and that goes to the utility billing supervisor. And if, if she thinks that, that it should be funded, then it, it comes to me or the Assistant Finance Director for final approval. And so it's, we can, we can oftentimes have these applications, um, approved in a day or maybe two days if somebody's out, um, rather than taking a month or however long it, it took at Community Action Council.
Thank you Troy. And so if someone has mobility challenges and doesn't have a computer, Tomwater can work with that potential.
Uh, you, you cut out there a little bit, but, uh, I think I got enough of your question. And yes, we can, we can work with them through whatever challenges they have, uh, to help them. You're welcome. Councilmember Kathy, did you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, if we're going to start to, you know, working on this project, which I'm, I'm delighted about. And, uh, one of the things that, excuse me, that, that we need is we need publicity within the city. Uh, about what, what we already have or what we're going to improve or some of the things that's in, that we've talked about here tonight and that the mayor has, has mentioned. And we, we need like to put an insert in the, in the bills like we do about me choosing, you know, a drain to, to rake in this fall and shovel in the winter. And, uh, because our, our inserts in our bills are, I don't know what people who don't get, you know, their bill mailed. How many people we miss that way or whatever, but a lot of people don't know what we do. We do and we were, we're working on for them. And so I'm just putting a plug in for some, um, as we work on this, some publicity around it. Or if we want to wait until we get some new things going or, um, let people know we're doing it. If they have any suggestions or that kind of thing. Anyway, communication.
Yeah, Councilmember Kathy, I see our new communications, uh, manager is writing. So, um, he's taking notes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for that. We do, uh, we do try different things. We, we do put fire, um, you know, a little mailer in the utility bill from time to time. There's also a, a box on the utility bill where we can put a message in there. So sometimes we do that. But, uh, it does seem to be hard to get the word out and so, um, that, but that's something, we have pretty caring staff, um, at the front counter that, um, try to help people and they're aware of these programs. And, um, uh, we do have a couple mobile home parks that were basically every, they've, they've provided us enough that we could put them on the lifeline program for the 50% discount, uh, for, for everybody there because it's a bunch of people using one, one meat, water meter basically. And so, yeah, we're, we're always trying to get the word out and, um, a, a quick thank you to Alyssa, uh, who is our sustainability coordinator. She, a couple times over the last couple of years, she said, hey, I'm, I'm going to have a table out at the college or somewhere. And can I tell them about this program? And oh, yes, please. And here's some flyers. And so, uh, we have a, a, I think a good, uh, overall team. But yes, we're always looking for, for ways to get the word out and we'll continue to do that. Okay, uh, so on this slide here, um, our current, our current utility rate for the Tomwater owned utilities, water sewer storm is 6%. This budget proposes 12% for those. Um, again, not, not the power and the cable and the other things. This would bring in an additional $617,000 a year, um, of revenue to the general fund to help pay for some of these things. And the cost to the average customer is $8.08 a month projected. And Councilmember Gohoff?
Thank you Troy. With that 12%, does that include the stormwater increase to contribute to the Deschutes Estuary?
So this, this 12% is, is the utility tax portion only. Um, and so there, there would be, there, I don't have a slide on this tonight, but, uh, we are, um, actually bringing the fee resolution back to the, we're going to bring that to the whole council this year. Mainly because of this, um, this proposed increase to the utility tax. But the, each utility, water sewer and storm will also have a, a percentage, uh, increase. And then the, the increased utility tax on top of that. Um, and I'll, I'll give you a spoiler, uh, because we always, we do always like to talk about how even with our increases, we're still less expensive than Lacey and Olympia. We will still be less expensive than Lacey and Olympia with the, the annual increases and the increased utility tax. And right here, um, since we, we do always like to know what our neighbors are doing. Lacey currently still has their utility tax at 6%. Olympia is at 12 and a half. And I actually looked, um, we've got some, some great data, um, from AWC. Unfortunately, not everybody fills out the survey, but for those that have, there's, there's a lot at six, there's a lot at eight and 10 and 12. And there's some that even go up as high as 29%. I don't know how they did that, but, um, the, the utility, uh, tax that cities charge is kind of all over the map. Yes, Councilmember Gohoff?
One thing, as we move forward and have these discussions, I'm thinking about residents who are still on well and septic. And how do we incentivize them to connect when the rates keep going up double digits? So just one thing, like where does that fit in in our future conversations? We have the majority of Tomwater, I feel, is rural. And we have a lot of areas that are still on well and septic, which, you know, the bill for septic monthly is zero except for like a clean out every three to five years or maintenance. And water bills are usually around 60 bucks, uh, with the PUD. So as we have these discussions, I would just want to make sure that we figure out how to incentivize people to go from their current bills and investment to double-digit increases.
Thank you for that, yes. Okay. Talk about some other funds, uh, briefly. We don't budget a lot of money, a whole lot of money in most of these funds, but, um, as you know, we've got 31 funds now. We will, we'll most likely be using the debt service fund again pretty soon. We haven't used that very much. Um, and if we do, if we, if and when we proceed with the M and O center and the water storage tank project, those will be funded, uh, by municipal bonds. And, uh, so we'll see more and more activity in that debt service fund as we pay those back. Capital project funds as well, because that's what'll initially pay for those. And then of course our proprietary funds are, are utilities and golf. And then we have our internal service funds like the ERNR. Uh, so some highlights of the biennium ahead and these, so these are some things, uh, that are also, um, included in the budget that, and we've talked about a few of them, but, um, that you might want to know. So we have in the budget an urban forester position. So that's pretty cool. We'll have our own staff for that. Continued sustainability, uh, projects and energy conservation projects that Alyssa's been working on and continues to work on. For the arts program, we should have a new arts commission in the next, uh, fiscal year. And, uh, an equity commission coming very soon. We have started planning for the community center, which is part of the TMPD, uh, promise, uh, to, to get a community center. I think we had an open house, um, just, just earlier this week or, or maybe last week, days this week?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, and of course we talked about the Medic One unit and body worn cameras. Uh, we've also got some great work going on with the EP, EPA grant, uh, the Brownfield redevelopment grant and the ecology grant for the Wash Dot site. So as, as you know, councilmembers, these two grants are to study pollution at the old brewery site and the, uh, DOT facility on Capitol. And then hopefully further steps, if, assuming they find contamination there to remediate that and, um, eventually be able to redevelop these properties. We mentioned renewing the transportation benefit district, uh, the maintenance and operations facility. Hopefully kicks off next biennium. Uh, we've got some great culvert, uh, projects going on. Uh, this, this involves, uh, wider, better culverts for fish passage. And, um, that, so those will, those will be some nice, uh, projects to help, help the salmon. And, uh, help the health of our streams. We mentioned the water storage tank project and Water Main and, um, continuation of the Deschutes Estuary, um, project, which, uh, you just, um, approved, uh, signing. approved, uh, signing of that in our local agreement last week. Uh, we'll continue to, to green the city's fleet and, um, continue the ERP project, uh, throughout the city. This is a terrible picture, but it's in, this is one of the pages in your budget. Um, so I did this in its place so you can see it easier. Um, so overall, um, overall budget for the general fund for the biennium, $131 million. Uh, development fees, that's your, your, the impact fees that developers pay, um, about $19 million. Uh, we've got the two CFPs at 39 and 36 million, and then the, uh, proprietary funds, which again are utilities and golf. And ER and R, um, including everything, including projected ending fund balances, uh, brings our total budget for the biennium to about $428 million. And if you recall, the, the last, uh, biennial budget was, uh, just over $300 million. So it's quite a jump, but it does include these big projects, uh, like the M and O facility and the, the water storage tank and some others. And so that's, that's why you see such a, a much bigger budget, uh, overall. So next steps from here, um, we talked, mentioned several times, we'll, we'll go do more work on this budget. Uh, we have another budget workshop coming up on November 12th. We also have two public hearings coming up, uh, one on November 4th and one on November 19th. Um, in and around those dates too, we'll also have some other, um, public hearings for the property tax levies for the city and the TMPD. Um, and then, uh, final adoption of the budget slated for December 3rd. And we're to the end and it hasn't been three hours yet. We've had a lot of questions as we went along. Any other, yes, uh, Councilmember Von Holt?
I'm not a question, but I really appreciate these slides. Um, I understand the want to condense the budget. So it's, um, more digestible, but these slides really, really helped, um, paint a more transparent. And so, um, just it's, it's been very helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Troy, I have a question. Can you go back to the?
Uh, Councilmember Kathy had her hand up first and, and then we'll go to you.
Thank you. Uh, all I wanted to say, I agree with what Kelly has said. And Troy, I want to thank you for letting us ask questions and, um, I hope we didn't interrupt. We just kind of wanted to say what we wanted to say when we wanted to say it. And, uh, you let us do that and I, I appreciate that because we need these kinds of discussions and opportunity to know where each other's coming from. So you facilitated a very good work session. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, Troy, I agree with, uh, both council members. Um, but for that slide that shows that we are over budget, um, and we need to reduce. Can you keep that slide and just add what the changes are after that slide?
Oh, sure. Like for the next, uh, work session?
Yes, for the next work session.
The next budget workshop?
Yes, for your next briefing, right. Keep that one and then right next to it on the same slide. If you can just show the differences, I think it will make it, make it a little more transparent.
Yes, I can definitely do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But overall, uh, very well briefing and we have some challenges ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to, oh, Councilmember?
So I'm nerding out, so I did percentages that they went up, each of the departments went up. And so there isn't, uh, like information that backs that up. So that's what, that would be my question is like, um, from, you know, why from 2023 to 26, what's involved in the, you know, each of those? I've got it now because like on the sustainability piece, we're hiring urban forester and that. So that's a 75% increase. So that's pretty big. So I understand that now. So it would help me understand when I'm looking at percentages. And I don't know if you wanted to cover that with everybody or just, you know, if I could just.
Well, and I think that came, that came with tearing down the information in the booklet.
Right, exactly.
As soon as we get that worked out, then it'll look.
I, I didn't have to look through all those schedules again. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And, and even, I mean, even if we had all the schedules, you know, for, for one department, you have to look through a lot of schedules, especially police. Cause they have several departments within the police department. Um, and, um, but I, we can, I can definitely put together a summary and bring that back to the next, uh, budget workshop. Um, to, to have some more, you know, easy to understand, like bulleted points, like police, it includes.
We have five more people, right. You know, just, yeah, as you covered in the slides, but yeah, to, on each of the lines that, yeah. Reflect, uh, the biggest pieces that, um, because it sounds like a lot of it is staffing. So I get that part of it. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would just say this biennium budget staffing cost is a significant part of this budget. So.
I want to thank all of you, uh, in person and online. That was, uh, a lot of really good questions and discussion tonight. I appreciate it.
Great. So with that, I, um, we're to the mayor's city administrative report. Uh, Lisa is not here this evening. And I don't have too much other than, uh, to remind everyone, next week, we do not have a council meeting or a work session because it's the fifth Tuesday. And then the following Monday will be our, our work session. So, I, I'm sorry, our city council meeting, which is on a Monday because election day is on Tuesday. So, um, so you'll be seeing information in pockets and, and reach out if you have any questions on anything. So with nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.